Okay, now, um, let's see, on the administrator decision.
Motion to approve hiring Jamie Gabor to have the next administrative of Village West.
Second by Gordon, second by Prince Hall. Anything else on the discussion? Other than nothing but possible, congratulations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So Gary, thank you very much, everybody.
Well, for us.
Good job.
Me.
All right, uh, let's see.
Motion to reject this monitoring project for economic development for anti-application for the 2014.
Motion by Prince Hall.
Second.
Second by Gordon. Any more in the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Motion to decline the offer per just five hundred. They have this discussion for session.
Motion by Prince Hall, second by Ermely. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, all right. Now we move up to the front. Chief, do you have your presentation?
Um, is she connected, Nate?
We can move right into that.
It's Amy.
Yep, she is. And that is what's on the agenda?
That is the first item under new business, number forty.
Okay, I'm reporting, we're gonna move forty up front. Right now, everybody? And Nate, do you have?
Yes.
She's on screen.
Hello, Amy. Can you hear me?
Hi, good evening, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I'm Clay, we've never met in person, but spoke on the phone.
Yes, nice to see you.
Let your hand up. She's aware.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Wonderful, um, and I will go ahead and share my screen shortly, but I'll do a, just a quick introduction first. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, just gonna do a brief informational presentation for you about Flock Safety and what the technology is. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well. Um, and again, my name is Amy Cornell, I'm a Community Affairs Manager with Flock Safety. So if it's okay, I'll go ahead and jump in, share my screen.
Right in.
Are you able to see that?
Yep, yes.
Perfect. So, I will jump right in, so the whole Flock's mission and goal is really to eliminate crime, working with the whole community. We work with both commercial, as well as schools, as well as HOAs, to really come together and with the ultimate goal of eliminating crime. So, tell you a little bit about the history of the company. We started in twenty seventeen, and this is as a result of our CEO and founder, who actually was the victim of crimes. He and his neighbors were victims of crimes that included, uh, home invasions, car break-ins, things like that. And what he had at the time, and this is in Atlanta where the company's based, and what he had at the time was video evidence to bring to police. And what the feedback he received was included, well, this is great, but what we really need is some information on license plates or the vehicle. And that's when he really set out to develop this easy-to-use, effective, and ethical product. So to tell you a little bit about, um, why we think this is so important, basically what this is, is a force multiplier. So, it's a technology that's not in any way intended to replace the great police work that's being done. It's just something to help multiply the force and provide information where police can't be all the time. Of course, that's important now because of the limited police resources, and in addition, of course, crime is on the rise everywhere. So, um, it's even more important now. And as I mentioned, it, uh, you know, the community just working together to make that happen. So I'll spend a couple of minutes on how the technology works. Oops, so first, what you're seeing on the screen now is similar to what you would see on a Flock LPR camera. So this is a, a picture of the back of a vehicle. You see the license plate, you see the make and model of the car, as well as the, um, color of the vehicle. What you're not seeing is any information about that occupant or occupants of the car. So you're not able to get any information there. It's strictly objective evidence that is allowing you to capture, um, a photograph of that vehicle. So, uh, these are infrastructure-free, you can really put them anywhere. The coverage is twenty-four seven, and, um, you can get real-time alerts through, um, the National Crime Information Center, as well as any custom hot list that, that your local police department, police chief would want to connect to the system, as well as, um, Amber Alerts through the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. And as I mentioned, um, no facial recognition, no traffic enforcement, and, and no people that you're seeing there. So, talk a little bit about what this is, and a little bit about what it's not. Um, mention, it's not tied to any personally identifiable information. Also, um, our recommendation is a data storage of no longer than thirty days. And we found that because that's, unless it's a, a photograph that's being used for police evidence, um, due to a, a crime, it has to be something that's connected to a crime. So every other picture that's taken of these vehicles, the back of the vehicle, is deleted automatically after thirty days. And we found that to be kind of the sweet spot between giving police enough time to be able to access this information and use it as a crime-solving tool, but also protecting privacy. And this technology, um, works in a lot of different ways, as you might imagine. The cameras can serve as a deterrent, as well as the investigative piece, and also the proactive piece. So, um, if, say, a vehicle enters your city and is on a, a list for being a stolen vehicle, has been reported as stolen, you can be proactive then and identify that vehicle and stop the vehicle before, uh, the suspect who's driving may be inclined to commit more crimes in your community. So, wanna talk a little bit about some of the ways that we do protect privacy. The footage is completely owned by your department, so there is no, um, Flock doesn't own or access this information. It's strictly used by your department. And I also touched on this, too, a search reason is required for an audit trail. So an audit can be done in the system at any time. And then really that's to protect privacy and make sure that the system is being used correctly. So, the chief could decide who in the department would have specific access to the system, and there are different layers and different types of access that can be given. But always a search reason is, is required. So somebody would have had to report a vehicle, somebody couldn't just search every black Honda that's crossed a certain intersection or by a cer- uh, specific camera. They would have to, um, they would have to have been reported as part of a crime. There's no facial recognition software, and never used for traffic enforcement, or connected to any sort of third-party database, anything like that. And, um, I had mentioned the personally identifiable information. This is kind of a unique feature I wanted to touch on briefly. This is our transparency portal. And basically what this is, is just something that you can attach to. We make it available to, um, to all customers. It's something that you can attach to, uh, your website, as well as your social media pages. And it really just shows how you're using the technology. So you could put every other, um, jurisdiction that you're sharing data with, and vice versa. You could put your policy on here, as well as, um, how many, how many hits each camera has received, how the technology's being used. And really, it's customizable, so whatever you feel is most important for your community, we can customize it. But just another way to, um, to be transparent about how this technology's being used. So, as you can see, these are, this is a, a bit of a snapshot on, um, the other cities and counties, and, uh, I think there's a couple of schools in there that are using Flock Safety now in this, in your state. So, um, we have some work coming online now, but these are the ones that are already, uh, utilizing the technology. And wanted to talk through a couple of examples, just to show you the different types of crimes that can be solved using Flock. This is out of Beaver Dam, this is an attempted homicide charge. A seventeen-year-old boy, um, had, uh, apparently tried to run over a girl in a Walmart supercenter parking lot. His vehicle was, um, identified by a Flock camera, and they were actually able to, um, arrest him at his home later because they were able to identify the vehicle as it was reported after that crime. And then, um, one of the things, we, we talk a lot about carjackings and burglaries and other types of violent crimes. Silver Alerts and Amber Alerts are two crimes that are very often solved using, uh, we've solved a lot of these throughout the country. This one is out of Port Washington, Wisconsin. Um, this was a silver alert, um, missing person that was reported. And within a short period of time, as you can see there, um, this vehicle was found on a, what, showed up on a Flock camera, and they were able to locate this person and reunite them with their family, which may not have happened otherwise if we didn't have any information about where they were going. And then this is just an example for you, so you can see a little bit of the, um, cross-state lines, uh, some of the, uh, work that, that can go into solving crimes in multiple jurisdictions. Um, this is a, a very sad case of, uh, a missing woman that was reported missing and actually was found in another state in Michigan, after she had failed to pick up her child from school. So, um, a sad ending, but thankfully, they were able to arrest the suspect. And then this, um, is, I'd like to end on this one. This is a, um, Amber Alert out of, uh, Chambly, Georgia, that's a suburb of Atlanta. So, this woman was pushing her baby in a stroller down a street in Atlanta, in her neighborhood, um, in Chambly. And she, uh, was approached by masked and armed, two armed suspects, who snatched her child, threw the child in the vehicle, and drove away. She was not able to get the license plate, but she did get the vehicle description, and they were able to put that in, um, the Flock system and find this vehicle and the child with the, still with the suspects in less than six hours, about five and a half hours there, a whole state away. So it was, this child was actually found in Alabama, um, after her, the vehicle came up on a Flock camera, and, um, thankfully was reunited with his mother and is safe today. And that concludes the presentation portion, I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
I've got it. So, um, are these movable? And is it a one, is it two, is it three, how many?
Yeah. You can go over the cost and directionality per camera, if you would.
Sure, so, um, I'll, I'll defer to the chief on the number of cameras in the community, but for, as far as the, um, the question about whether they're movable, there is a version of the cameras that we can, that can be movable. We don't recommend that, we actually recommend the fixed locations. And we do have a deployment team within Flock Safety that would be able to come out and help identify some of those locations. And, um, they're very, a lot of them are former law enforcement or very experienced at it. So, um, we would, um, use that to identify those locations. And then as far as cost, it would be three thousand dollars per year per camera. And that's, it's a software-as-a-service model, so it's, that would be, um, you know, the cameras would essentially, the physical cameras would be leased, and then the software would be, um, used and owned by the police department. So, um, that would include all software upgrades, and all, all of the standard upgrades that happen during the length of the contract would be included.
What's a standard life for a camera? I know you started in seventeen, but...
Yeah, so they've actually, that's a great question, the cameras have come a long way, and we've, uh, we've actually made them, the, the company has worked hard to make them sustain a lot of different, uh, scenarios, including, uh, weather. And, and one of the things, one of the big challenges, particularly this year, was to make them, um, a little bit more able to withstand heat and things like that. So, with all those, those changes, and as far as they've come in the last few years, the cameras, there are people that have cameras up for several years, and the same cameras. Of course, that being said, if something happened to your camera, we would come out and, um, and fix that, and be able to replace the camera. And there are a couple instances where there would be, uh, cost involved, and that would be vandalism, um, if a pole needed to be replaced, things like that. And we do have a fee schedule there, but in terms of, if a camera just stops working, or it shuts down completely, if that's still within the length of your contract, we will replace that camera.
So just give, give us a visual on where this camera would be located. Is it something like a semi? Or it's, uh, in the, you know, high in the air, but above the road? How's it, where do you place the cameras?
So, they can be placed anywhere, and we, we have, um, there are a lot of communities that place them on existing infrastructure. Some work with the utility companies, and they use utility poles to place the cameras. In addition, we could do, uh, we have our own poles that we could install and use. The cameras themselves are actually quite small, they're a little bit smaller than a football, I'd say. And then, the, um, there's a solar panel that goes with them as well. So, um, they're not, they're, they're not very large, but the, the ability to be able to put them wherever is most convenient for you, and wherever works best in your community is, um, is definitely helpful.
So the cameras, uh, Marathon County I saw on here has a, and our chief has told us that. So I've seen cameras on the, um, on the overpass by Fleet Farm. So I always slow down there, I went up the Merrill every day. And, uh, could those be the Flock cameras?
I don't think those are the Flock, I think the Flock are generally put on the side of the road, and they're not all that high, because they gotta read.
There are a side on poles.
Yep.
Well, I saw solar panels, so I just thought maybe.
How many cameras are you looking for?
Well, I mean, the idea of, I can, the idea is to get, um, major egress, where you got your, you know, entry points. Yeah, like coming out of Camp Phillips, um, I know the county has purchased a few, Wassa has purchased twenty, I believe.
Twenty, please.
Yeah, they're paying for twenty per year. And so the major entrance and exit points, it would be nice to have, um, the county all exit foot.
Do you have to give a number?
No, I mean, it'd be nice to start and see how they look, or see how they produce. I know we've had, um, I know you've given examples of some major crimes, I could tell you, even with a couple in our county. Um, I can't tell you how many hit-run crashes we've solved with the existing Flock cameras, in simple things like shoplifting from Target. It's, it's amazing, you identify a sticker or some black rims, you type in a couple things, and within minutes, you have that vehicle's license plate, and it goes by one of the cameras, and it's, and it's solved.
So you mentioned, uh, a national database, and then, um, what's the limit that these cameras can have? As far as, uh, identifiers? You know, I mean, the national state, and then how much local, I mean, indefinite?
So, it would be up to the chief to decide which agencies and which departments that you would want to share information with. There is a national database that the chief could decide to enter into as well. And, um, so that's, that's something that would be an option, but it would be up to your department.
Okay.
Those, uh, solar panel work in winter time?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Solar panel work in the winter time?
In the winter time.
In the winter day, yes, yes, so they, the solar panels also are, um, built to withstand different temperatures, and, um, and can definitely stand up and do very well in all inclement types of weather. And again, with the solar panels too, as I mentioned with the cameras, if anything happens with those due to inclement weather, um, we would come out there and replace those.
Are these hard-wired or completely standalone? Like, they're powered by a solar panel, they have an internal battery, um, and then they transmit via cellular signal to somewhere? Or are these have to get wired in?
Yes, typically, there i- is possible to wire the cameras in, but most of them are solar-powered. And we actually, as part of the, um, deployment teams', um, efforts would come out and identify which solar, which carrier, which cellular carrier is, uh, most effective in your area, and be able to, to work that way, in terms of, you know, which one we would use to, um, to set them up. So most of them would be, um, cellular run.
So we would work with Wassa, we'd work with Marathon County, um, around the country. And well, that, but I mean, locally, though, we work with where those are now. And then where are some, some, you know, some blackers?
Yeah, some like Camp Phillips coming in, so they're one direction. Yep, and then any entrance or exit points coming into the village, like Jay, Camp Phillips, um, you know, we could look at Schofield Ave.
Wherever, I mean, I thought it'd be immediately Camp Phillips.
Yes, that'd be the first place.
Retail like a Target.
Well, they, they'll go, you know, a lot of people leave to those, that, okay, so that, that would be my.
Interesting. Okay, so, you, you said you're, look, you didn't give me a number.
I'd like to start with a couple, I mean, I'd like to start with two, and I think you'll see, um, from the feedback, I could provide the board feedback, because I know it'll be immediate, uh, the number of things that they catch, just with a couple in the county, how many success stories we've had locally. Um, it's great that it does all those things like Silver Alert, um, stolen vehicles, one homicide suspects, all those things. But, I mean, just the retail thefts, the hit-and-run parking lot crashes, and identifying, you know, correct, anything. You get a vehicle description that don't have the plate, in the likelihood, you're gonna get the plate if it passes by one of its cameras.
What's the standard length of, of a contractor lease?
So, so, um, most of them are about two years, we also have a one-year contract as well. So, um, that would be, that would definitely be an option.
So, what's the range of this camera, how far it can identify a vehicle?
Generally, if it's on the side of the road, any car that goes in the direction that it's facing, will get every, every license plate, unless there are no plates.
And it doesn't matter how fast it's traveling or anything.
It's actually up to a hundred miles an hour, that it would be able to capture a clear plate.
Safe mark.
You're saying have to go. It's, oh, like, it's three grand a year per camera?
I was told, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was Kyle, it told me it was twenty-five hundred, did it just go up to three grand?
It did recently go up, but I will defer to Kyle on, on what he told you, and what you all, the initial conversation. I believe it was in May that it went up, so it was very recent, we hadn't had a price increase before then. So, um, I can get with, circle back with Kyle and make sure he, we get that clarified for you, chief.
And then after that, from what I understand, and there's no, you just wanna be done, um, there's no penalty for that, and you can just stop the, after the contract is up, whether it's a one-year, two-year, um, and move on.
Are there incentives for a longer period of time?
Um, I would, I would defer to our sales team on that, I can get that information for you.
Sales has a lot of. Okay, all right, the presentation, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, take care.
We want to have this as discussion interaction.
Um, just your opinion on it, um, I think it's, the value is there, the example kind of speak for themselves. I know that it's building and building in the state, and, um, at the onset of this, there was a couple different companies that we were looking at, probably a year or two ago, and now it's becoming all Flock, which is nice, because...
Does it only look like our cameras?
So we're already connected to, um, I'm connected already because I sent, signed an MOU about six months ago. We're connected, we don't have the database to look it up, but we're connected to dozens of departments already. Everybody's sharing from Washington State to everywhere, so if there's, um, any hit, and you have a Flock camera, you're gonna get notified.
And likewise, we have a bit. Well, what are, yeah, what are our funding options?
Village could try to fund it, or you could defer to the MPD's budget, which is difficult to increase.
I would think that each community would have its own. Village of Sculpit once, they're only.
Yeah, that was my initial thought.
I agree there.
Were you thinking this year?
It's up to the board, I mean, it, it works immediately, because we've seen the results already. I think just starting with a couple of major points.
What's your suggestion?
I would have to, we can look at it, wait till the end of August and see what the budget surplus is looking like, and we could definitely move from there. Find out.
Going.
So it started before we budget for, so there's additional funds this year, I think we could kick it in this year, and then just continue it in our budget.
You know, I've had a lot of questions about, you know, stopping, you know, speeding tickets, that, you know, to the officers, uh, it gets a waste of time. And I've never heard it's about speeding, I've never heard about that, it's the content. It's, it's all about the content, it's about, uh, out of fifty cars you're contacting one. You might see something, you might, you know, uh, you know, something might not be quite right, and that always leads to something more than speeding. This, for, you know, three grand out of one camera, or let's say six grand for two ways. I mean, my God, an officer is one hundred and twenty-five thousand, three thousand, and they can't read a hundred miles an hour. They, they can't possibly put that kind of information into a database and get results. So those are all hits, those are all, I, I always saw those about the revenue of the speeding ticket, and it has nothing to do with that. You know, you're, yes, you're alter-enforcing, but it's, it's the content, it's that hit.
Hey, in my opinion, I, I think if we're gonna get a good flavor for how well this works for us, yeah, we would actually for just my two cents.
We do have a big area, Wassa's getting twenty. I mean, the county's looking at the far entrances and...
And you would work that with all of them.
Absolutely, yep.
Also, it only put it in Wassa.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
County could possibly put areas.
But if we help, then the county has some grounds.
Yes, like, I know they're gonna put one on the far east and west end of the county on twenty-nine, but I would be more interested, when they get off at twenty-nine and come into the village, that's when I would, or leaving the village.
I think four, four sets.
Well, try four.
So, do we wanna just?
Maybe should we, should we make a motion to, to plan for it in twenty-four? But if we have, if there's a surplus, we can look at it.
You know, it's, it's August, my experience is a lot of these companies, you could tell them, you know, planning on budgeting for, for twenty-twenty-four, and they'll start working on it. By the time, you know, you're, you're getting to the, the end of the year, they'll have it all taken care of, and then they'll just wait and invoice you the following year. Oh, I see, so get them now.
They'll start working on it, and, oh, you know, they want your business, so.
You're probably right.
Yeah, so you have the buy-through, you get one deal, right?
Hold that on top of what Jessica said, to see what, yeah.
What is the turnaround channel?
Um, no, I don't, I know that they've been extremely busy, it took Wassa quite a while, I don't know how many that got implemented, but, um, there's a demand for it.
Just to get in line.
Is Amy still aligned, can she answer?
She is. She is?
Yeah.
Amy, can you answer that question?
Yes, absolutely, I thought I might hang on in case you had any more questions, but yes. So, um, the turnaround time is right now about three to four months. We did have a bit of a backlog, so, um, it shouldn't be more than about three to four months, though, right now.
All right, where, where are these cameras made?
So they're actually made all throughout the United States. And recorded in Atlanta.
The other part I was gonna ask about that is, you know, three to four months, we have frozen ground, so putting new posts and things to the ground is a little tougher. Yes, so is your preference to utilize existing posts or poles as?
Um, we could do that, if that would be easier on you, I understand, at that time, it, that might be an easier option, but we can also work with you around timing in terms of, I can certainly pass that along, that, you know, if we're looking at three to four months, it's gonna push it out due to weather there, that, that's completely understandable. So, um, I could definitely see what we might be able to do there. But, um, in terms of, um, you know, what your preference is, that's completely up to you. We do have the poles available, and they're actually cemented into the ground, and then we also, um, we could do existing infrastructure as well.
You could do poles now, and then cameras in there.
I know business, businesses donate some of these too at times, and I, you have very good business relationships here in the, in the village, that would be something I could reach out to and see if they'd be willing to donate money to purchase one.
Okay, right. We done?
Yeah, motion.
Yeah, motion.
A motion to, um, approve for families. Finance.
When I have a question, uh, well, okay, I need a second. Second, uh, second by, by, um, on the, on the discussion, can we, can we kind of give a, like, what's six, we still do four, but if the finance are six? Because I can see four on an intersection, and then like two at Target, or one at Target, or somewhere else. And I'm just, I'm just, uh...
Yeah, maybe coming back with, for the second one, if, you know, the other two.
Four, four, right? Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So, here.
Aye.
That was forty, thank you. Four zero. Four zero.
Yeah, it was.
All right, so now we'll be back up at the top, uh, we're going to public comments. So, I've got public comments, and I've got two, two requests here, I've got one from Edward Swain, uh, forty-seven, forty-three eleven, Schofield Avenue, uh, number one oh four. Park conditions, and owner's lack of remedy. I think that's it. Anyone?
Well, I did, but, you know, um, because of the meeting that took place just prior to this, I was able to converse with Roman outside.
Okay.
And he was able to, you know, clear up a lot of questions, concerns, you know, that we're understanding now, I got a better understanding of what's going on. I do have a big concern about what's happening in the park, because, well, you guys gave a ultimatum, they're tearing trailers down. They don't even use common sense to separate the trailer from the water lines. For every trailer that's came down in the past two weeks, we've had an emergency water shut. And at one point, at one point, it even turned into an wreck, it was shut off.
Okay. Right. Three and a half.
The other issue I had was, I woke up to go to my lawn Saturday morning. I'm not supposed to use my arms, so I've gotta be very careful. I got a rider, but I've got flags all over. There's no warning, there's no indication from the... There's no warning. There's no indication from the park that we're gonna do some digging or blue painting, whatever we're doing. There's a park full of red and yellow flag. And I'm like, what the heck is that? Can you contact the management? And they don't, they don't tell you nothing. You sure? Nobody has been in that office since the last time I sat in this. And it hadn't been, there hadn't been anybody in there prior to that. But just to keep you guys updated as far as management goes, nobody's been in that office. I did send in an email, a couple of emails earlier today with some pictures. So rather than elaborate on all that, Pam sent me an email letting me know she had received it. I'm hoping that somehow you guys had the opportunity to take a look at that letter and more importantly, those pictures. Because my objective at this point is to keep you guys updated as to what's going on there as I can. So we hopefully come up with a solution that doesn't involve any of us moving out of here in October.
Okay.
There's none of us can afford.
Okay. Well, I I mean, normally this is just public comment, but I'm gonna comment. I got a call last week that Roman was in the park too much. So that's a good thing. So I can. Well, I know, but not from not from residents. I had a little bit of a conversation about Roman on that. Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Number two, Donald Davis, forty three eleven Schofield Avenue, lot fifty seven, a lot of issues. The trailer park looked like this mess. He's got a junkyard. Edward, Donald, did you want to talk to?
Yes. Uh, I've lived there for ten years. I've never seen that trap park look as junkiest as it does.
I I see. I I know several trustees are going through their office. And I think Jen said that there's actually three different plumbers working there now, correct? Okay, I see stuff everywhere. Everywhere I look, I see stuff happening, maybe not as clean or as organized as it should be. But you're right.
Yeah, but they're. It looks like back in the woods.
Okay, it's what is it back in the woods?
Don't they cut a tree down or push it and ride back into the wood?
I saw that on the north side.
You know, real quick, my point of view is that, you know, you're dead very, not have your guards looking all fast and stuff like that. I bought one of four in January. They sold trailer one of six April. And right now it's starting to look like a surplus. The guy built something. Makes it shiny right off the porch. Kindly, there's a guy that stays in that too. You know, they got cars all along that that field next to them. They got trailers next to the trailer. They park in the front yard. Every night, every night, there's probably seven to eight vehicles sitting there to the point that they're actually blocked thoroughly. I came in from a better thing the other day, and Daddy turned around, said, well, I have to go around this. Oh, I think you're perfectly fit to. Because it's red last time. I didn't have a heart shirt. I didn't want it, you know, waiting longer. But then on top of that, I had to be at that facility at four o'clock in the morning. I come in at eleven o'clock that morning from hospital. I haven't had nothing because I had to eat no food, not a drink or nothing before I went in. Then I get home, and I can't even have myself a glass of water or nothing to bring something to eat because the water's been shut out because they broke another hiding. You know, this, this is stuff, I mean, it's not on you guys. It's not on on Roman. It's on, obviously, it's on the responsibility of these guys that are doing this. But, you know, this, this ram shot, oh, let's just get in there, knock it down and be done with it attitude. Their attitude is very harmful to the whole, set up the whole park. It's just, to me, you're causing more problems than you're cleaning by doing this. And then you you evict people, so they just move into somebody else's trailer so they can keep the drugs going. We know of a guy that sells drugs or does drugs, makes drugs, manufacturing medicines. I left that office down there. Six months after I left the office, the guy got arrested for transporting. Got on a five thousand dollar bond. He never left that treatment park since. He doesn't have to. He's got a couple of kids that are gonna buy his drugs. Now, every night, since these guys moved into one oh six, this guy's every night, every night, back and forth between his house and ours. Nobody deserves to have to listen to that thunder every night. You know, there's gotta be something.
We're getting a lot of internal correspondence from Roland, Christine, Travis. Jen is letting the board know some of the updates. I know several of the board members are very much. So, okay, I appreciate you all coming and expressing yourselves. Have you had that talk with Roland? Hopefully, if we go week by week here, it starts getting better. I mean, I don't know when it's gonna turn. But I think you need to let us know when you feel like it's turning, starting to get better. So it's, we gotta get to that point at a certain point.
Well, I got to Roman. All the situations you guys have put on him, the deadline you put on him. I think these guys are gonna, they're going around bunches right now, taking trailers out, thinking that's gonna satisfy them. I think that they're putting all these flags in and trying to pepper them. Basically, they're just trying to blow up the bed. Those smokes can make it look like they're on the red trucks. The board says, well, you know, you guys are really big guys, so we'll go ahead and give a lean in here. We'll give you a little more. Just to give them more attention. We pray now that that will not happen. We're saying, we're saying enough tonight, we all get the solution because there's no guarantee that they're not though, these guys are gonna have everything on the park. There's no guarantee that this park isn't gonna get shut in October. You know, I'm sixty seven years old. I don't have twelve thousand dollars to go buy a trailer that I'm gonna lose eight months later. Because of the fact that the people that own the land that I'm renting can't take care of their.
All right.
So. Have they done anything at all? I.
No.
Okay, because I went in there a while back and I thought, I'm not trying to sit in and tell her something.
They hired point of beginning. So they hired point of beginning, so they're going to be, they have to survey it and design it.
Are there? Any parental thing? They have submitted a project, POV does not have the engineering completed yet, so therefore we don't have any documents in in office to to reference. Have you talked to them? I have. Okay, okay. They say they referenced American asphalt last time, and I don't believe there was conversations. So Hanson is the is who they referenced most recently, Hanson paving and S D Allen Becker for curving. So that's what was related to us two weeks ago.
Point of order. We have we have updates on this coming up.
Okay, all right. All right, let's see. Thank you all very much. We're gonna move on here to minutes from previous meetings, four, five and six. Approval of seven seventeen twenty twenty three, approval of seven thirty one twenty three special board and trust of trustees. And approval of eight fifteen twenty twenty three special board of trustees. By Ermily, second by Tornan. Anything on the discussion?
Yes, I spoke with Clerk Raymon some of this. There there were some minor discrepancies in the. The roll call vote versus vote total didn't change the, it it was just a typograph error that. Like it showed seven in the yes and seven in the not voting on one of them and another one was. Two voting members were present and showed them a no instead of a not voting. So didn't change the the result of the motion. Minutes are still correct, but just minor.
Okay.
Update on this.
I got it.
So any more in the discussion?
And it's been fixed already.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Thank you, Jasper. Announcement reports minutes from boards committees and questions. Number seven, ad hoc public safety building renovation. We've got that.
Yep. Jasper, anything on the safety building, me?
Oh, no, this is only. This is only approving the minutes.
Yeah, so motion to approve items number seven, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen.
By Tornan, second by Pitts Hall, all in bar discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So here, reports from departments nineteen administrator.
Uh, good updated punch list on the new building. There was a version in the packet, but that was based on our meeting back on the first of August. So I have a hard copy here. I can distribute that or I can send you a updated version of PDF, whatever. There was a question about the gates and there is an issue with the voltage coming through the. Wires out to the gates. It's not being, it's not low. It's not sufficient for the card readers to work. It can work manually, so this has to get worked on in the punch list as we follow up here with Myron and Tuni, so.
You say manually.
You can, right, you can go out there and.
Oh, we've never shut our gates there, right?
No, they have never been closed. What, maybe for a test?
Yeah.
Okay, well, but they will operate that way. But that's not the intention that I operate that way either. So we're gonna be. Follow up to get on these things. On the radar for everybody because we have to have that in their record before our warranty period gets to the point of expiring, and we don't want it to get that far either, so.
So it just has to be submitted to them that it's deficient. It doesn't have to be remedied.
They get notified of it before the warranty period is over and they have a minute effort to complete it, but they're still having to take care of this.
Right, that's that's my question.
You know, so as in, I didn't see this parking part of that.
We have parking lot striping as one of those items as well.
Striping.
It is a time where.
Oh, this part of the parking sitting higher than the sidewalk is supposed to fix it.
Okay.
I had a discussion with him and I suggest we use the heating and then roll it. Possible that work. If it doesn't work, then you gotta come to us.
Just an asphalt meeting up to the sidewalk?
This asphalt here sitting at least orange fire than. Brian knows about it. And also that the lower roof in there is supposed to put the changed, to me, the water is draining from it. Right now, it's just coming down and the vent blowing in the building in the winter time, even though ice fell up at the side of the pitch.
Okay.
So there was a meeting on the ninth and just keeping up the on the schedule. So at that time, the clocking had been completed on the B Street. Omni is there now, beginning the painting on the eastern outbuilding. Chamber of Insulation was there today, starting the installation of the interior ductwork, so. These things are underway. I got, I have some, a submittal that finished touch signs, but today, I guess, if. Chief Schultz and Chief Vicki have some time, another member of the committee, we can look at the color selection on the the corner towers. And there was a question about the sign design, and maybe that's something I need to file with trustee Harding.
The blue, the apples, all the buildings.
Right.
Okay.
It's just a, was a question on the color for the, there's, there's a sample colors here for the, the red and the blue.
Right.
There's like a multiple different shades. I guess it's just a matter.
Those are up. Once those are up, then the only thing on the ground will be chases, right, correct? Okay, so the the western, the safe, the western square, safety devil side.
So we talked about. Talked about waiting until the other signage was up before that sign comes down.
Want to take it down beforehand, we can arrange for that too. It's western fire department, which doesn't exist. Doesn't, we're safer. I I did, I did work on it. And then the wires. And then I saw the eight or nine swatches on that corner by the garage.
Those were just the same colors that were.
Oh, okay.
That were specified and. We looked at that with the two chiefs on last Tuesday, wasn't it? Wednesday, whatever. Anyway, yeah, we've we've accepted the colors and they're. There's a combination there. Dark is on the top and the bottom, different places depends on where you are.
I can't wait to be surprised. I just can't wait. I honestly, God, I can't wait.
Right. I don't know what else to talk about. We did talk about fifty five hundred Schofield Avenue in closed session and. Submitted my official retirement notice resignation notice to President Maloney. As Friday, if you like, or you want to do that, your business later, that's fine too.
Let's, let's, right now. It's dressed to me and the village board of trustees. Dear President Maloney and village trustees, two thousand twenty two, as the village began to look at possibly use the ARPA funds. I indicated my intention to retire by the end of this year, two thousand twenty three, and consider finding the next administration. I realize the recruitment is underway, but not complete. It actually completed today. While I I had indicated desire to continue my role as administrator to the end of two thousand twenty three, I thinking has changed. I will reach a milestone birthday by sixty fifth on September second, two thousand twenty three. I have now determined that the time for me to step down from my position as administrator for the little village of Weston should be at the end of September this year. I know this is in accordance with section fifteen or eight of my employment contract with the village, which requires that I give at least a thirty calendar days' notice prior to my resignation. Retire. I planned for my last day of work to be September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three. I must admit, I have many mixed feelings about retirement. I'm not sure it is something that you can fully prepare for. I keep thinking there are still things I want to complete before I retire, but then there are always going to be those things. I feel I have made positive contributions to make West better. Thank you, the board of trustees, the staff and all the people I have been able to work with my twenty six plus years with the village of Weston. Best wishes to everyone for the great future ahead. Keithy Donner, C C Bill. Good job. You done a great job. So outstanding. September twenty ninth, there will be ice cream and cupcakes, you know, some hats to wear, some stuff to blow. Maybe, maybe a little leaning over at Fields Bus and Land or something. Of course, the safe ride holds for Keith to our peril. What, what, what day is September twenty eighth? Okay, so Tuesday is your call. After more.
After this, we could.
Every day now.
Just watch, watch the emails. After that's what I think, especially. I, I, you know, I didn't plan to have breakfast this morning, Keith and I, and I slipped my mind. He said, obviously, you have something else going on. I thought, oh, my God, I'll be there in fifteen minutes. So he even ordered me a little breakfast and we had a nice chat this morning. And I I just want to say, when he says there's still stuff to finish, and I kinda, he brought it up this morning. I said, I know, but let's talk about the things to finish. So we brought up this, we brought up that, you know, some work that he inherited. And I says, my God, I mean, you can't leave a clean slate here. It can't be just a cute little idea here. You gotta leave, I believe the crap ones, for sure. And with no notes, no nothing. And you know, you get a call, you'll be waiting four or five times for six or seven more phone calls, and then you find the answer. And I mean, all kidding aside, Keith, you've done a great job. And I'll tell you, I think it was Barb and James' idea to to ask you to do that. Well, it's happy, most happy, okay, but we're gonna give Barb the credit. But I think it was all really well. We, very well. So the staff loves you and you're gonna have a great time. I'm right behind you. All right. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Utilities are all off at fifty five hundred?
Yeah, you ain't gonna miss that at all. Ain't gonna miss that at all.
Yeah.
I have not just funded all of our equipment out of that building yet. Okay. I do not have a direct answer for you.
What the problem is?
We gotta get on that. I thought July first, sir.
I'll call Joe Raider right now.
Well, I I just thought we were gonna have. Is water utility working on it here yet?
They're all here, yeah.
So that's all happening, and that was the big deal, why we couldn't leave there. So now we can leave. Yeah, we we gotta, we just gotta make it happen. So. I would, that big white truck, two men in the truck or whatever, get it all on her, just bring it over here, let her up and go. Uh, clerk, any more for Keith? Or for Mr.? Any more of, you want to add anything to? Uh, anymore, uh, you wanna add anything to it?
Nothing other than my report.
Okay, Jessica?
Nothing to add.
Yes, smiling. Is there something you wanna say or? Any, uh, questions for Jessica? Uh, fire DMS.
The only thing I have to add is our training containers were delivered on Friday, I believe it was. So I just have to work at Public Works to get those set exactly where we want them, which will hopefully happen this week. Other than that, unless anybody has any questions.
Are those going back on your wood area there?
Uh, behind the training tower that's there, yeah.
Any questions? Uh, parking right?
I did have a report in the packet, didn't, obviously the biggest highlight for us was yesterday was the last day for the pool. End with a bang, somebody bombing it all over the pool and we ended up shutting, closing down early, so.
So what time did you close last day?
It was like six oh five.
I, I went by there. Five, five fifteen, I could not leave the crowds.
Yeah, we were.
Parking, the parking was all the way down to those buildings, yeah, I, I just couldn't believe it, and I thought, holy.
Oh, it was, it was going well.
My sister said, tell them they have rooms. I, I just, I never seen the parking that far down, yeah, that was awesome. Got a little bit of people coming there. Uh, twenty-four, planning development, Jen.
I do not have anything additional, unless you have questions.
No. Uh, chief.
Uh, real quick, we had a swearing in ceremony for two new officers last week, Wednesday. We had like thirty people show up for it, so that's gonna be kind of a newer thing, it was very well received, check out our Facebook. Thing, so we have two very excited young men, they're both twenty, they started the academy on Friday. Um, and then we'll be back with us in December, so we're chipping away at the deficit for.
Personal, good stuff. Oh, it works, Michael.
I guess the one thing is, headed here, we had hired our open utility operator position. It's an internal hire with Jared Huckstra from the park department. We work with Sean to kind of backfill that park position.
So Jared is going where?
Uh, utilities.
Oh, wow, good man, okay, but he's been here what, five, four years?
Two.
I've never, never had first time introduced in that, that Tuesday meeting for lunch, yeah, you did actually. And twenty-seven, Nate?
Yeah, something I think I have, had like, opened up, link on mine. This is the rendition of the website that we got back after I gave them some feedback. No, nothing huge changes, they chalked down the top portion that was requested, made the logo a little smaller. And on the bottom, I had them add a river into the bottom, I just kinda thought that was a good touch with. Since we have one that runs to the middle of our village.
Yeah, I like it. On Facebook, I get seasonal updates, newsletter. But I, I, and then, uh, you were talking about that front door, you got that call sign. That doesn't close.
Yeah, we're cool, Roman, Roman and Jim talked about that tonight.
Right, I was there with, I don't remember still, but I don't think it closes, yeah, just. All I need to know, the strength was energized last week and I adjusted the closer last week and I thought we had it. A good spot, but we'll take a look at it again as soon as we're back, we don't want it to take your finger. Or have like a dingy, like refrigerator.
Okay, but what's the next step on the website, will they?
If we're happy with where they're at, we approve the design and then they move forward with the. The mobile device, when we look at that next.
Okay, I'm land on that or Wes or prove it, you approve it, we approve it?
I just fill out a form, so we're ready to move forward.
And evolve it info vision, how that meeting called, what'd you learn there?
With, well, we were supposed to have training last Thursday on the admin side, but they had to move that, so we have it set up again. We're probably next week. So, but otherwise, the rest of the group, then. Talk utility and all involved, I wasn't part of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant with the, meeting with the actual information people, like with the new software.
Oh, yeah, we were supposed to meet at that last Thursday, they had to make change, so we are setting up.
Hillary, man, cancel all the emails and everything.
Yes.
So even the audience know where to tour, the town of Rome, it's their, their webpage from, who does it for you?
Tom Webb.
Uh, Tom, but.
Tom Webb.
Tom Webb, you have your own web.
That's just the name of the, Tom Webb.
Okay. Right, uh, thank you all, we need a. So, by early, second by Sagami, anymore in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Aye.
You, so carry. Okay, work products, minerals, now is July, holy permits. Motion to, uh, motion by Pinstoll, second by Conan, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
You, opposed? So carry, I'm sent, attend, uh.
Will you approve items thirty-one and thirty-two?
So again, by Conan, second by Pinstoll, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry, ordinances, number thirty-four, ordinance number twenty-three, gas, zero, one, four, uh, ordinance to approve the rezoning of nineteen nineteen Schofield Avenue. From M H manufacturer home to B two highway business zoning district village of Weston, Renon County, Wisconsin. My pleasure.
Want to approve?
Will the reason by Pinstoll?
Second.
Second by Corin, anything more in discussion?
Yes, I spoke with. Dr. Higgins, and she did contact you, again, he has, for the property owner, he has no opposition to changing that. They wanna rezone it without talking to the guy first.
For us, this is the former, Elbahn Park.
Yep.
Yes.
So we're on the same page.
I read, tried to build that package there, is, um, is the son ever thinking of selling this home?
Nobody has approached him yet.
Yeah, we should probably do that. Okay, yes. All right, let's see, no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Aye.
So carry, resolutions, number thirty-five, resolution twenty-twenty-three, gas, zero, one, four. Resolution to levy special assessments against property benefited by drive approach. Water main and laterals, sanitary sewer, main and laterals on the Ryan Street slash Apache Lane utility looping project.
Moved to proof.
Moved to proof by Sagami. Second by Ermally. Um, anything on the discussion? I will tell you, if you have not driven down there and seen this project. And how half that neighborhood is, it's just, it's just beautiful, I mean, the amount of curves. Uh, you know, the whole deal, and then you go over to those two or three other streets to the east, I believe, that aren't affected. And I'm, I'm telling you, it's just, it's, the first time I went down there, I thought, what the heck happened? And then I forgot about the project, and then I, I kinda drove out a little bit, and it continues out, it's just beautiful, I, I like that crestwood too. I actually go through Crestwood just because I like the way the curbing is, it's just neat, so I'll keep talking, sorry. Uh, let's see, so where are we on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, so carry, I won't, what's that happen again? Unfinished business thirty-six, updated possible action, our rescue plan, ARPA funds, don't even talk about it unless it's. Fun stuff, so anybody have any fun stuff or happy stuff to talk about our funds?
So the fun stuff was discussed at finance tonight, uh, the goal of getting playground equipment. One of the items, so we're, we're working towards that, so, and other things are, I guess, still open for discussion.
We have a ballpark of what that's gonna cost.
Well, the, there were, uh. Cost estimates for all the play structures, and they ranged anywhere from, depending on the size of the structure, was from like sixty to one thirty. Depending on the one, and we focused like, obviously, the larger, larger play structures at the community parks should be Kennedy, Yellow Banks, Kelly Land. And Mockmiller, so there's more of a community park versus a neighborhood park. So your larger structures would be placed at the parks that have more traffic. And then your, you know, like Williams, Sand Hill and Robinwood are your neighborhood parks, those are smaller, you know. Williams and Sand Hill are both two and a half and Robinwood's like five acres, so it really serves.
The ones are Kennedy.
Kennedy, Kelly Land, Robin, or Mockmiller and Yellow Banks. We're looking at two structures at Yellow Banks because of the separate park areas there. So, and we should have a new cost, additional cost estimates from landscape structures, who I met with. It was a week ago, last Thursday, and that was just the initial, they were going to do the site assessments and measurements on their own.
Are they just beat on your door, are they finding out that, oh my god?
He's a, he's, our rep is actually a Western resident.
Isn't that one that I sent to you or no, or is that different, I'm trying to remember.
Don't think so, is it landscape structures, yeah, landscape structures, yes, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one from Lake Duvee?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, so Gerber Leisure is the rep, they're out of Mount Harbor, uh, Landscape Structures, okay. Oh, they would, you know, but we've contacted two so far, and. The biggest thing is, just like we were talking about before, it's something that has to happen, I mean, right now they're thirty weeks out. At least thirty weeks out, so if you do get something going, um, we won't see something for at least thirty. And if we don't do something this year by November, we won't get nothing built next year either. Cause they're backed up just like everybody else.
I don't want to be scared, but are we gonna get some preliminary design here from the Rattler?
Yes, they're working on concept science, um, I mean. Last, we talked, um, would have been. June, um, and they were, you know, after the public information means they were going back to start working on concepts for. The master plans, and then I know they're on the last chapter, last section of the corp update. Uh, because I have been corresponding with, um, Becca regarding that. She has some additional information she's looking for, she asked for some possible, if we had any more wetland information or. Easement information on the process property because of the pipeline easement there. Um, so that's the most recent stuff she's requested, and that's on the corp, but they, they were working on concepts for the parks. So we should see some more meetings here soon.
Yeah, I don't wanna see bring the final, you say, here it is.
No, no, they know, they know they're working on concepts.
Okay. You know, when we're gonna see it?
No, I, I can touch base with them and see when they're gonna have something ready.
Always ask them for a schedule, give us the schedule, because we can't just drag the project.
And we, and we do have a full schedule of when they're supposed to supply that, I just don't have it on hand right now.
Please do that.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven, update on goals for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five strategic plan. Just, uh, this is a marker, it'll be on our tennis every month. Uh, thirty, discussion and or action on update of stillwater landing menu pressure part forty-three eleven. The Jen's or Roman's or?
Uh, you guys just asked for this to be on every month, so.
We're giving the internal emails.
Yeah, so I've been trying to do weekly emails since we received the, basically their action plan. Um, they're kind of going through the thirty day and into the sixty day range. There's a lot of work going on there, we're taking lots of emails, Travis and Roman are in there. Pretty much every day, like you said, the park thought they were in there too much at one point. Spending a lot of time on this.
Is there any outstanding permits that are still waiting to be approved? There is one new home permit, okay, that is in the queue.
What is done?
God, this was, this has been billed and paid, thank you. And then let's talk about the ten new trailers, I, I don't see them there, right? They're not there. They're not, they have not been delivered yet, I mean, if, we basically document every conversation, we have Sam and Cory face to face.
So you do see him, you see him there?
We forced Sam to be in this on site on Aldersday.
Okay.
Because that was, I think, the morning of the, the ninth building incident, all in the dark. Um, so, we just, we are, we are keeping pressure on him. They're pulling out all these trailers, everything that they put permits in full has been removed. So that's our abandoned and dilapidated trailers.
Okay.
So they've got, those, those sites are clear, they are not finished with site cleanup. Some of them have, you know, piles of brick at the sites, uh, some of them are not broken glass that needs to be break up. Some of it's insulation, uh, so they're, they're progressing down the road of completing those permits. Okay, so when we spoke with them on Friday, Thursday. Their plan is to bring in, you know, granite to go over the top of the, the home pads. Uh, just as a, as an overlayment. And then we asked them to bring in, since they're bringing in granite, that they need to fill the potholes on the, on the first row. I think we gotta, we have to push that, so.
That's a safety feature, it's, it's not a screen feature, it's, it's not a, a convenience feature, it's a safety feature.
Yep, so that's, I mean, we, you know, I said, we know, we know you're planning work in here, but, you know, we need to get these, these holes filled up. So. Well, it's not a great time, or. No, so I mean, that's, that's gonna be easily a couple months until hopefully the paving starts or something. Right, and if basic paving doesn't happen this year, then, you know, uh, got some, some frozen granite in there. Hopefully make something easier for access. So did you meet him at the office that's there? Or we met him outside of the office. Okay. Uh, we did not go into the office, uh, we proceeded up to a lot one thirty-eight where they're doing an active demolition. So. I have not been in the office, we typically just meet him outside of the office. Is this gonna be the front building or the second? Second building is their current office. What's gonna happen in the first? First building is there gonna be their new office, oh, okay.
Some of the complaint they had to write, is that related to the construction they do out there or?
So they're doing a lot of, a lot of stuff all at the same time, right, so they're doing site prep, not can't prep, but site prep. And clearing for the sites that they wanna bring houses into, which are like one through forty-five. Not each site, but it's in that front strip, that north strip that on the, on the side, right? The first turn when you go into the left, so, yes, there's a lot of trees that, um, in the process of clearing, they have. Back into the wood line. We have ordinances that they're gonna need to take those out when the houses go in. Those are five, six foot.
A trunk.
Oh, yeah.
Just tilted in.
Yep, so I mean, it's, it's a process, but I mean, that's what they're doing is they're clearing those sites. As the demolition company, company is, is taking out the houses. And there's the excavation company that's trying to not electrocute themselves. In the process.
Was that a bigger top line issue?
Uh, they, what the, what they told me when I asked them directly face to face, not Sam, but the excavation.
Oh, okay.
They were told by, I mean, the staff members on site said, it doesn't run diagonal across your dig site. Runs parallel to it.
In a random diagonal, okay, so it was a, a miss.
It was a miss by diggers. Okay, that's why all the flags have shown up, are.
Yeah.
Is if WPS, there's hotlines. Okay. Bloom of, yeah, flag flowers as we go, any, um, anymore?
No.
Okay. Uh, let's see, thirty-nine, discussion and or action on UTP accessible vehicle trucks. Uh, I actually called last week, yes, talked to Sarah and had her put these on, um, it, it's a little, it's. Uh, but I'm looking for, I'm, Steve, you might have some others too, is Howland Avenue opened up between Camp Phillips and Alderson. So chief, I want you to think about that, and then Shorey Avenue opened up from Camp Phillips to Alderson. Not Camp Phillips and Alderson, so it's if, if we can open up those two portions. That would, I talked to Sammy, if anybody knows Sammy yet, uh, thank you, if anybody talked to, uh. Uh, equipment rental, if you know Sammy. But that would then open up that they could go through and get the roster. I don't have any issues with that. You don't, okay, and you're a little bit more up to speed on all this, you're okay with that too?
I think it's just up in the right direction.
Yeah, it keeps them off western, right? That's very rural.
It's very rural.
Very rural.
Are you still looking at some other things?
Jen said that there was a.
Since we've talked and I've been fifty, so I apologize.
Yeah, so Nate put out a survey, and that got put just on Facebook briefly. And it got put into the, to the e-news right away, so there's four hundred and fifty-two responses as of now. It'll be in the newsletter, yeah, it's almost beating the chickens.
ATV.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, we'll have it in the. So we'll have it in then, we'll have it in the newsletter too. So, um, yeah, there's lots of comments on it. I sent the chief a copy of it written in the meeting and so we'll just continue to monitor it. And have Rachel put it out more often. What I noticed with the chicken one is if I. Kind of set it up at certain times to go out, it upticks and people take it. So we just need to sporadically put it out there again.
She was putting it out again into tomorrow's.
Cause you can tell on here when taking.
Can we have one?
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the door. I want gold. I paid way too much for gold.
Well, I can spend the ring and the tail.
What a question that somebody asked me. If chickens are allowed and, uh, what is it, the covenants in these subdivisions that have booths? If there says they can't have that in that area, um.
We have an active homeowners association because the unfortunately, yeah, so we do not enforce covenants. And if there's not an active association, like when I lived out in Sandy Meadows, they told me we had one and I knew, okay, there's no association. So there's nothing to stand on. You just have, it's basically a civil suit. You can take your neighbor because they're violating. But I can't do anything for your covenant.
It's, I think, was in your title. I don't think they got homes.
Yeah, so that I, we wouldn't know and we wouldn't get it.
There you go. Let the fun begin. So we're looking for, uh, action on Holland Avenue between Camp Phillips Road. And Shorey Avenue between Camp Phillips Road, I'm sorry, Camp Phillips and Alderson for both Holland and Shorey.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Corin, second by Ermily, anymore in discussion?
Question?
Uh, yes.
Do you want to open up Alderson Street?
But.
Do, would you want to open up Alderson Street through there or not?
As a north, uh, north.
Yeah, between Holland and Shorey.
What, what kind of housing, what density do we have there? Doesn't Holland and Shorey just, Shorey keeps going, what about Holland?
Well, Holland and Shorey technically are parallel.
Yes.
And Alderson connects them.
Yes, so Holland keep on going, go past Alderson.
It dead ends in the village of Rothschild. Shorey keeps going.
And I would say yes.
I did, I can make an amendment.
Well, the other thing is, half of Alderson is Rothschilds.
Yeah, the west half of Alderson there is in Rothschild, the east half is.
So I'll amend. I'll amend my motion to add Alderson Street between Holland and Shorey to the other two roads of the.
Okay. Uh, so we have an amendment by Corin, the second by Ermily, uh, anymore in the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry now on the original. Is that how we do this?
Yeah.
I, I had no question.
Ermily got the six, we got.
So, uh, no more discussion, all those in favor and the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, new business, uh, hey, forty's done, I'm happy. Uh, forty-one discussion and or action on the old makes this call, of course, wetland humans, feel well, they wanna make. There's only fresco. To prove, uh, motion by, uh, Wu Sheng to approve. Second by Ermily, uh, anymore in discussion?
Question, are they looking to add some more? What are they looking?
We're really just looking to, uh, get the wetlands delineated so we can determine if there's areas approved for mostly for access. Maintenance purposes, because right now, you literally, anything you do down there, you have to do with hat trimmer.
And we had this, uh, finance, thirty-five hundred bucks. Okay, it's, I'm, I'm thinking this, you know, way over the top, it's thirty-five hundred bucks. And you also have, uh, the disk association. Thousand members in the area that actually help you.
Yeah, yeah, there, I mean, they do the majority of the maintenance down there with brushing and stuff right now.
I, I brought up, like, maybe this is the wrong spot, you know, because I would be dead down there if I had to walk around there. Move out to, uh, Raska, and, you know, we've got the bathroom there now, we've got the house with that there. You know, it's a hard one, it's a tough one, but, uh, for that little bit of money and the, and the help that they're giving us. So, um, anymore in discussion? Carry none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, uh, forty-two discussion and or action on Fuller Street Engineering Services contract.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Sagami. Second, second by Wyland, anymore in discussion?
Question.
Question.
Strategic plan calls for moving that intersection. Right, right, you're gonna engineer this from Ross Ave all the way out to Schofield Ave. The, I'm sorry, the Schofield Ave corridor plan calls for that intersection to get moved, so it aligns with Old Castle. Are we not, are we still not looking at that or?
We are, that's part of, that's part of the design requirements for the consultant. It is that part of that. Part of the request and the request for proposals was to include the intersection analysis as is, is also with a. Relocating it to the west to, so it lines up with Old Costa.
Now, do you see that brick building that feels so, um, house being bought?
It, it depends how we wanna lay it out. So I guess for, the first task for the engineering firm. Um, is to see if that even makes sense, you know, does, does the traffic study say we should even do that?
What if the battle with men orders becomes too much that we just back off and do it as is?
We could, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just didn't, I don't want us to rebuild it and then five years down the road, we're like, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna re-align the road.
Yeah, no, so, so that was a bunch of part of the proposal.
Taking so many roles, uh, part of that.
Yeah, we have to, we probably could.
Yeah, yeah, because there's a pretty good chunk of, um, woods in between Arrow and Hales that I think fall on that right away.
But you're gonna have to stake that road over to the west really quick.
And they own the other side of the road.
What?
Arrow, well, doesn't Lori?
Yeah.
East side versus west side.
Yes.
That's just a lot to ask, you know?
If we don't do that intersection, let's say, sorry, doesn't work, it's still that four has to be rearranged. Because right now, when you sit in there, you're sitting there.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I, I drive it all the time. I mean, I don't know, maybe we should check to see if we're on, we're on old customers.
That, that, that probably will be looked at, to be perfectly honest, that will be looked at.
Yeah.
So, oh, you're fine, just wait. Um, okay, so it is being looked at as part of the engineering.
Yeah, so item six in the proposal was they need to include this intersection alternative analysis as part of their design study for the project.
Okay, I'm good.
Any, uh, anything with the phosphorus loading ponds, that sort of stuff, is that, can that happen with this project or?
Yeah, so that's also required as part of it is, um. After you have a number, yeah, so number five there, part of the storm or manager plan is to look at the Kelly Land Park system for the phosphorus reduction.
Forty-two, uh, I, 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 carry, forty-three discussion and or action on well seven change order number five. Move to approve, move to approve by Sagami.
Second.
Second by Corin, any feedback on the discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry forty-four discussion and or action, although tax intersection improvements for Schofield Avenue and Weston Avenue. What's happening there?
Um, you wanna go?
Oh, you started it.
You started.
This is two intersection, which is, I think, uh, very important in our community.
Yes.
And, uh, of course, Schofield Avenue and Camp Phillips could be more challenging project. Than West and, and Camp Phillips. And these two also county involved in it, we have to work with the county because X is a county project. So, and, uh, in the past, they look, however this project, they're move or, or. Even if you look, there's no turning lane for the gas station. And that's a big minus for that intersection. So roundabout, I think it makes sense. And there isn't great impact on the property on, uh, any of those, actually at West End, there's no impact on property at all. But on the Schofield Avenue, there is some impact on the mobile station.
On the mobile, but what if we shifted it northeast?
It's still gonna be some effect, I know.
Because, because, uh, would that possibly mean so?
Yeah.
We just haven't heard it yet, but I believe you have to northwest, if you went in northeast. Because, uh, up and left. It's who's right. I, I just wanna win here.
So, so, so you're talking about two different quote, Jim, Jim saying. Yeah, Schofield, so, so you're talking about the Christianson in the northeast. And Jim was mentioning shifting it northwest into the kind of farmer's market area.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so I guess either, either way, this is just a concept that was done like five years ago, part of the Camp Phillips corridor plan. So this would need to be updated and, you know, re-looked at, but.
Would, would we be able to get the lift out of it?
Yeah, so the hump would get out of. Yeah.
Yeah, but that's okay.
Yeah, you still don't go straight.
Because you can go fast, not stop, take a turn.
We're gonna have those.
So you can fly like that, going through that. Also, I think, uh, I'd like to see that two project be as one project in bed. Not just give it.
Right, okay.
Who's gonna pay for it?
Jeff, and then, um, Evers has all kinds of money, uh, for roundabouts. Roundabouts and wifi, that's he loves paying for this.
I think we should make Mexico pay for it.
No, I think we need the, seriously, I'm, I'm serious about this, I mean, roundabouts and, uh, broad banner, hey? And, uh, you know, maybe we gotta talk to, uh, food.
Roundabout isn't a real idea.
I, that's what I.
You will never, there's so, and a roundabout, the idea of roundabout is you don't. Uh, you don't slow down or interrupt traffic, right? So, uh, Google Maps, if you zoom out though, there's a bunch of commercial and or residential properties right in that area. Within a quarter mile, the only way you can get into or out of those parcels is because that traffic light turns. I can tell you why I have one of them, two blocks west of there, and you won't get into or out of my life. Until that light is red in one direction, and you only have the amount of time that it's red for three seconds. Between the, the changes of direction that you'll get out. You wait thirty seconds until.
To that point, if you go down to Weston Ave, there is nowhere near as many points of access on Camp Phillips. It's, it's a lot easier to put that roundabout there and I'm, I'm totally fine with that. This one, I, I have a problem.
If you need to spend the money, I must.
I think these are gonna be study.
Oh, heavens, yes. I believe so.
There's already a signified intersection there.
Yeah, but these are gonna be a study, uh, excuse me. I think you should let him study it and then come back to us and we can make a decision, yes, you can do it, no, we're not gonna do it.
So we spend money to have him study it.
The purpose of roundabout is to improve the safety at the intersection.
But you're decreasing safety at every other point of access.
Not necessary, you gotta take a look at it. We're looking at the picture, which is not being designed. These are just a rendering and you can't make a decision on it.
Highway forty-seven and double O, Appleton on North Atlanta. Three lanes on a, a circle, and there are touch points, there's a quick trip there, Taco Bell, McDonald's. All kinds of places right away, no stop signs, no red lights, no greens, no nothing. And, uh, my eighty-seven year old mother handles it very well. I'm just saying, it's, it's touch, you know, Chief, you've said many times, it's a touch, it's not a crash, not a roundabout. Anyway.
What are your thoughts, Chief?
I just wonder about the flow, I think, brings up a really good point. I, I just, I don't know what studies show, I've never read any, but. There is a lot of traffic at that intersection, and I don't know how fast that that wheel's gonna go around to clear all that, is my only. But I, I'm not an expert at it, but that makes me a little nervous to be honest.
I, I, I'm in trouble with six of them on, uh, on any of the Green Bay, you know, uh. Overpass, you know, you, you, to get anywhere, it's three on this side and then three on that side. I just, I guess, and the period has to. But, uh, well, I don't know, we gotta do something.
Or I, I, I'm not disagreeing with, we have to do something. I don't think this is it.
Okay, so, so where are we?
What are we asking for? Is, is the improvement, will that give us an option for right turn lane? So that give us all of our options? Or is this only gonna look at roundabout? And what is the cost?
I think we should, uh, look at the roundabout.
All that.
And give us a proper design or proper layout instead of just using your area photo. And then based and the cost estimate for it, then we can make a decision.
I think it's spoken, uh, and, uh, definitely has to be tooling with right turn. I, I, I think it has to be all of that. It can't just be two lanes and then you drift off on the other side thing. And, uh, if you go to Appleton, that's what it has, it's really nice. Uh, you go to Merrill, it's one lane, but with all right turn offs. With curb in, you know, between.
You're talking about like the roundabout, like at the entrance, when you go into Moski there, where you have the dedicated right turn and that you have.
But, yeah, that's a big.
Right.
Has to take the bank and everything.
I think that the, uh.
What are we actually, what are we actually discussing or action on this? We're talking about, uh. For forty-four, we're on forty-five. Yeah, we're on forty-four, so.
Yeah, so, so I mean, my, my question, well, my question, I don't know if it should have said contract. Yeah, oh, we, the question is, should we pursue doing an engineering analysis and design for. Either or both of these intersections, because they weren't, they're not in our CIP, they're not in any of those plans, so. I need direction from you guys.
Wu Sheng said one at a time, so let's do forty-four, where are we? So I make a motion, what's your level?
I'll move the, by any means, I'll analyze this two intersection.
So you're saying that for forty-four and forty-five?
Correct.
Okay.
So forty-five is a separate topic.
I'm, yeah.
Forty-five.
You're right.
Yeah, that is G.
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay, so we're talking about forty-four, uh, motion by Sagami. Are you a second? Second by Wyland, anymore in the discussion?
What is the motion? I'm sorry.
Uh, to, uh, look to, um.
To hire consultant.
Entire consultant.
Analyze this two intersection.
Okay, roll call. Seriously, roll call, really, okay? Um, Jasper, you still on? Okay, so forty-four is a, um, motion by Sagami, second by Wyland, vote call vote.
Maloney?
Yes.
Sagami?
Yes.
Ronan?
No.
Ermily?
No.
Ensign out?
No.
Violet.
Jasper, you there? Uh, motion fails. Okay, forty-five, discussion interaction on CRJ and Weston Avenue.
I need a brief synopsis, the county is looking to repave Conero J next year. Um, I guess I was talking to him, said it seems silly for us to have construction there this year and next year. Um, so they talked to ACOM about putting together a design for that intersection, for that little stretch of J. From kind of where the concrete transitions south, um, so this, they, they just asked if we could run it through our contract with the ACOM. So they don't have to go through creating a new one and we'll, we'll charge the county for any cost incurred on this, so.
And we're just, uh, as is.
As is.
It's just a pass through contract.
It's just a pass through contract, it'd still be a two-way stop, there's no signals or roundabout or anything.
Motion do, move by Corin, second by Sagami, uh, anymore in discussion? Carry none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry forty-six, discussion and or action on bill's participation, fire, installation for EC Everest High School property. What's your pleasure? What's kind of costing the?
Seventeen thousand. I, I was a little confused, my, are, are you saying that, so there was a cost estimate for thirty, was it thirty-three thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Are you saying that you think if we do it ourselves, we can do it for less than that?
No, I'm saying is we, we would supply the materials and the school district would pay for. The installation of it, so if we give them the water main, the hydrants, pay to have the road repaved.
So this is, yeah, because originally it was quite much more price.
Correct.
We would do it ourselves, so who negotiated this? Was between Mike Holland, my soul, and all good job, good job. They, they originally said no.
Correct.
Yeah, but originally, I was like a hundred and seventy.
Chief Zicky got in the middle of this, Vicky got in on the scoop, and it was a meat.
The issue is, there's no hydrant access from the far, is that the north or, I'm sorry, this?
The east?
There's one far to the north and then there's one.
But this is an obvious.
The east.
Where the one in the backside is not obvious.
Correct.
You'd have to know what's there.
Correct.
If you were a. If you were a responding community, coming as you would not know what's there.
Right.
You'd have to be.
And it would be difficult to get to it.
If you're busy and Riverside has to come, they're not, they're not gonna know what's there.
Yeah, and it's obvious.
So if anyone go, write their sign.
So forty six.
Have a monument sign.
Another question?
Yeah.
Michael, do you have this stuff all here? In your or you have to purchase?
We have it. We we'll steal from the Western Ave project and backfill ourselves.
So, yeah, we have it in on hand.
Okay. Yeah, anymore, hearing none, all those in favor, CI?
I didn't think there was a motion.
Bring on the motion, right? But I didn't hear a second.
Second, okay, so. Forty seven, discussion and or action on request for temporary easement for A and R Pipeline. Property adjacent to WPS gas game station.
To approve the easement and direct staff to contact and begin enforcement on the fencing with Wisconsin Public Service, which does not meet zoning guidelines.
Second by Ermling? Yes, question.
He pays sixteen hundred, is that sixteen hundred that's gonna cover our attorney fee?
Can ask for a little more, I suppose.
Oh, we should, unless we gotta see what the rock spends here, they pay us sixteen hundred, we spent two thousand dollars. Temporary easement. They pay us thirty three cents per square foot. Thirty two cents, I'm sorry.
So what do you wanna, what what would you like the conversation to be?
I will amend my motion to make it read the actual cost of the attorney agreement.
Okay, so motion on the amendment, all those in favor, CI?
I.
Opposed, so carry.
I have something else.
Well, I was just gonna say that. Jim, he amended the motion, but then. Well, nobody seconded the amendment.
Yeah, she did. Now back on the original.
On the question?
Yep, whole question.
So that fence that's on that property on the corner there, whose responsibility is that?
Service, that's a public service, who what you're told.
Did they choose to put that fence in, or was that something, because I've seen that fence blown over more times than I can count. So it's always, it's always over, so I guess my question is. Are they just gonna repair the same problem that keeps happening, or? Because we've told them that that's what needs to get done, or can they put something else up there that would suffice?
Does it need to be?
Does it need to be a white?
I think they want it fenced, I'm guessing that came from.
Something that has holes in it. Anything.
That's probably, that fence has been there since deep. That probably came from him in the hospital.
Yeah.
Putnam was probably involved in that.
I'm just, I I'm just asking.
From our standpoint, it can just be a fence, they just want it for security purposes, that's what they have elsewhere, but I'm guessing that Putnam owned that. So they may have put some restrictions on it.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure there is a chain link fence behind that one, too. Maybe that's just private.
It was aesthetic for.
So let's move into forty seven, so that's last chart, so I mean, all those in favor, CI?
I.
Forty eight, discussion and or action on requirements for developer security on some subdivision project. Along.
So. I don't know that we need to, I gave you the background. Just came in, sorry.
This on in general, all projects, or is it on one?
Well, it's called because of what?
Right.
Would be in general, because we make some change in our code, it's gonna apply to. So. This this just seems to be, I think you and I talked about this, this is a recurring issue with any development. Has it back in the industrial utility? Principle is that we take on the development. That that development should cost our citizens, our taxpayers, our utility customers money to. Take that on, and the developers should be putting it all in, though, if we wanna be participating in them more. And I guess we need to.
And we are, we are to a degree, right?
Oh, we do, I mean. Emphasizing utility, as we've done that many times, do it in almost every project in some way. Even on Inner Springs, original plant. So the, I mean, the thing came up mainly because of. Uh, what should the security be? We can look at some options there, there's been some discussion, and even on the email today, he said that he had. Paul Durst, he's gonna come up with some. Um, ideas and follow up later, I guess it's gonna be maybe later this fall. And he wants to be ready to go initially, he said in January, now he says June of twenty twenty four.
So this, you know, obviously this, I'll be missing spring, so he's probably right on.
Well, starting in the spring, when he usually likes to start, it's always kind of iffy, so.
I I think that's a good, you know, you know, Alders, what does he do?
So I don't, yeah. There's always gonna be a push and pull on this thing with developers. Just trying to work out for the village's best interest.
So at this point.
Um, no, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, let's go.
I'd like to make a motion to call a special meeting of the board trustees to discuss this particular issue in depth with Heath, Tappy. Halters and Chris Fender from Inner City. There's a player in every, with an expert in every field.
Second, second by Corin, anymore on discussion?
Some of this item already is in our orders.
True, but I mean, this is just where we were trying to move forward, just trying to maybe change or.
I wanna make sure that village is protected, I understand. These developers don't like the expense, but you can't sacrifice village for develop, I guess.
Hundred percent, but we don't know what our options are, we don't know what we can do, we don't know what.
Other communities are doing, and how we can make this.
Uh, anymore discussion?
When this is, when you want this meeting to take place?
For September thirty.
Pardon?
Well, you're gonna be there, I mean, it's a special meeting, but.
I just wanna make sure that we have some.
Time in this thing, this is on your whiteboard, I know it is.
All right, so we'll figure that out, all right, all those in favor, CI?
I.
I. I can't believe, uh, all, so carry. Forty nine, discussion and or action on organizational study proposals.
From trustee Conan last time. But we had talked about this. It's a, it is an item that's also in our strategic plan as a potential item, I. I don't know that, you know, there's necessarily a magic bullet, but I think this, part of this would be to benchmark us against other. Communities potentially, how does our organization look relative to them? And I. I think we sometimes. Think we have more capacity than we do when we have discussions with the board, or. You know, maybe we need to focus on different things, I, I know one aspect of this was a request to do some type of. Time study, I think the way that's that's accounted for in here is through. Interviews of staff, but getting some in, getting information from them, how much time they spend on different tasks. Uh, things of that nature, but. Me to this thing was in pages. Well, six, seven, eight, and nine of the proposal itself. Rest of, rest of it is kind of fluff, marketing stuff. I I did black out the cost, not knowing if we wanted to accept this as a proposal at this point, or maybe explore more. Another thought was with our. Administrator coming up, or if they wanna look at this, open, see if the deal is sufficient, or they recommend it, I. I don't know how much people have looked at the, at the scope here.
I think at this point, maybe waiting until December would be a good idea. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
I agree.
Then we can have Jamie. We charge at this.
Yeah, leave that on the whiteboard, Keith.
I mean, well, okay. I did touch base to chief Schultz and chief Pinky about whether they would be. But they've thought that they could be, wanted to be lumped into this, I. Neither one said no, but they wouldn't think about it more, so whether or not the board feels that that's something they want to include as well as of being. You know, contracted service providers.
Three different dimensions, in in my case, I I would rather do this here.
I'll make a motion to defer this item to the December twenty twenty three board of trustees meeting.
Second.
Motion by Corin, second by Pennsyl, anymore on the discussion?
Yes, are there other firms that can do this, or is there a reason we pick bigger tiller, or is it?
Well, we talked with, I just talked with public administration associates, they don't have the capacity, I think. I think I mentioned in my report.
But that was for now, not for December.
I had sense that they may not have capacity anyway, but if we don't leave it open, we can also, we can always. Rephrase it, or you know, be reissue it as a request or proposal again. Just for order of making guesses, in total, it was seventy thousand dollars.
You have a motion on the floor. For carry fifty, discussion and or action on determining ownership. CT, discussion and or action on determining ownership of all lots. Existing recorded something that was last.
I had asked for this to be put out. Following a conversation, I had Steve and I, I I looked at my neighborhood, and I noticed, and I had a conversation with you about this, too. But there's some areas that look like they're supposed to be right right away, that are still. Beated to the original property owner, in this case, would be Gold Key or something of that nature, and I'm sure there's some other. Areas in the village where this is an issue, so I wasn't sure if this was something that we wanted to look at, or. Well, I guess the. The question tonight was, what what the board wanted staff to do.
Most likely an intern that we would have, that we would get most likely from Point, I mean. Explore that Valerie had talked about looking into another intern to help with the refuse and recycling, we've had that in the past. We just need to know for budgeting on purposes, Point used to have a program where they used to basically pay for most of it, so. I'm not sure if that still exists, that was pre-COVID, but we could look into it again.
Yeah, that, because I was gonna say I can't.
Because you could get somebody from, like Nate had someone that did GIS, there's planning students there.
And it would be during the school year.
Um, they actually, like, when I started at the county, I was an intern during the summer, so they have people all year round.
And it helps their their.
Right, they get some experience. No, that's why we haven't done it yet.
So I'll make a motion to direct staff to look at hiring an intern to help go through the all lots in the village.
Motion by Corin. Second by Wilder, anymore in discussion?
It's not an agenda?
It's number fifty.
So I can do it.
Yep, we can do it, as long as that's on, and I've always asked.
And it's on determining ownership, so.
And I would think if there's some costs related to it, it would have to come back to us.
Okay, if you want discussion and or action on village.
Was kind of ours together, correct?
Yeah, so this came from planning. We've had a very small portion of developers, and this kind of ties into. Do you have the next one, too? Uh, that. Have it had a great desire to. Finish their site plan, whether that's putting the landscaping, being drastic little girl. It's like with the asphalt, whatever it is, and originally that was. We held a five thousand dollar ransom as part of the site plan. Application fee that you would get back five thousand dollars after you get your site plan approved. And what's been discovered is that, wouldn't you know, you can't repay the parking lot for five thousand dollars. Can't plant all the trees for five thousand dollars, and five thousand dollars is really nothing, and then it's harder for staff to track, and so. The the idea was to come up with a different enforcement, because what? Twelve months after the site plan is, twelve months after you start.
Up to eighteen months usually for them to finish, yeah.
It's after occupancy?
No, the the code allows two years, basically, from. Well, you've got, you've got the site plan approval, and then you also have the building permit, and the state permit, Roman said, can be up to three years, so. Most of them take two, so usually if they're constructing, depending, like, if they start construction towards the end of the year. They may not get, most likely, they're putting their landscaping in next year. Sometimes they don't, depending on the size of the project, so sometimes it could take up to two years for them to be completely done with it.
The idea that was talked about at Land Commission was. Once the building had occupancy. And the rest of the site has to become compliant, right, we gotta get, we have the the property making money before whichever, so. We get in the building, and the building is good, and it's safe, and the village gives a thumbs up, well, now. Now it's December, we're not planting trees. So how do we get that, or if it's like Jennifer said, hey, maybe this thing, zero and a half build, or whichever. So the idea that was floated was, so if it's one year after building occupancy. That you have one year to finish your site plan, and these numbers are, can go up or down, but I'll just use this for an example. So after one year. Or Travis would come back and inspect the site, obviously contact the developer first and say, hey, look, is your site compliant, they come out. And inspect the site, and if it's not, they give them a list, hey, you can put your trees in. And. And they'd have thirty days to correct that. If they didn't correct it in thirty days. Then the village, and we'd have to change the inspection protocol, right, to have them come back in thirty days to reinspect the property. But that's for the fee schedule thing, because we don't have a fee scheduled support inspection, the idea was to make it. Financially worth your while to be compliant, so have like a thousand dollar reinspection fee on the thirteenth month. Coming back on the fourteenth month, now it's two thousand dollars, and the fifteenth month, now it's four thousand dollars every month thereafter until it's done. And the the five thousand dollars won't fix it, but when you can get. A potential for these fines that continue to add up, like you on the tax roll, and there's financial incentive to actually finish the project. You're not holding out their project by granting temporary occupancy, the other reason for it. And and common sense has to prevail, right, so if American asphalt is two months behind because it rained every day in June. Bring your email from America, that says, hey, Roman, I can't pay this thing, I'm on American schedule, like, this is the deal, and. Common sense can prevail, you don't have to find the guys. But if there's no. Avenue to have enforcement, they can't enforce anything.
Well, I think tonight all was was the board. Well, I think tonight all was, was the board just giving staff the nod to bring up.
Yeah, the planning commission wanted to look at it at the next meeting, but it was just if the board was okay with. They were talking higher fees, cuz I think it was like sixty or ninety dollar reinspection fee right now.
Yeah.
Most times they don't charge it.
That, yeah.
All right, let's get it.
Let's get it to sound better.
By early.
Second.
Second by Corin. Is this for fifty one?
Can I interject something real quick? I realize it has absolutely nothing to do with the fire department, but just on a fine thing from something that I learned. Is that there has to be, and maybe check with your attorney about this, but Shane told us that we can't just charge a willy-nilly number. For, cuz we do this for multiple fire alarms, and they used to be pretty steep when it got to like the sixth fire alarm within thirty days and over. And he said that we have to prove that it actually costs us that much to go to that fire alarm. I'm just saying we can't, the village can't throw out three thousand dollars to come and do the inspection. At least that's what I was told. I'm just throwing that out there so you guys don't do a bunch of work and then.
Can't be a profit.
Is there a way that those fees could be put into a fund that would? Fix the problem?
Have to look in it, into it, because he's probably talking more, do you do it off of a citation?
Yes.
So when you look at the, like, what the circuit or certain court has for their citation. You have to, like, add on these, they're all kind of strange numbers. So I can, I can talk with the attorney. And I don't know who our municipal court attorney is right now, actually. I want to find out. The attorney, because he left COVID, and we actually, I'll talk to Clay, someone over there. But there's, or the court clerk, we have like a fee schedule for citations. That's for all, all the communities.
That's a good point, though.
You're not talking about why?
No, so we have an actual municipal court attorney, but I don't know if that is right now.
All right, all those who prefer sky?
Aye.
All those, okay, fifty two. Discussion and/or action on requirement of development. Agreements on permitted use of projects.
I recommend approval of removing the requirement for development agreements on permitted use of projects. It should only be required for projects receiving conditional use of funding.
Almost by Corin. Motion by Corin. I'll second that.
I'll second.
All right, Jasper, you're seconding?
Yes.
Second by Hardinger. On the question.
Yeah, can we change it to just remove the recorded with her at that county part? Could that simplify it? Enough?
It can, but it basically.
Because you don't need an ink signature then, if it's not going to be in that county. If it's just given. It only needs to be handled in house. We don't have the new plan yet. The new plan is, even if it's a permitted use, even, hey, I'm gonna build this through Red Robin.
I think that the issue that Jen brought up was that it, this essentially does us no good. Like, we still have to go to court.
So like.
So a development agreement in a situation like this.
Who the actual applicant is, like, who can sign the paperwork for him? Because I deal mostly with REI, the engineering firms and that kind of stuff, not the actual property owners. So then it's like you have to get a property owner here to sign the paperwork. And so this was the first summer that we've done that. It does hold up the building permits, cuz I have to wait and get the, the paperwork back. The county won't take a, a, you know. You have to have the correct signature. And so it's gotta come, especially from out of state, like Titleway, Title Wash had to send it certified mail, that kind of thing. So we just was holding up some things, and it also takes time to get back from Matt, my county. And then talking to Matt, he thought it was overkill, and Kristen thought it was a little overkill for permitted uses. So it would be just for things that conditional, because really, I mean, it comes down to it. They have a site plan that is getting approved. I'm sending an approval letter, and I can attach the plans that get approved. So they're agreeing to it that way.
Moving to most by Corin, second by Hardinger. Any more other questions? Are you none? All those who prefer sky?
Aye.
One name?
Name.
Two names? So five, eight, two names. You guys want to check? All right, fifty three. All right, discussion and/or action on stormwater rate increase. Would you approve? Would you approve by? This is all, second by Zagami. Any more in discussion? Are you not all those who prefer sky?
Aye.
All those, so period. Fifty four, discussion and/or action on CPI slash market adjustments for budgeted wages. We had, we had a discussion during finance on the terminology. And we ended up, we ended up calling performance on the reviews and market adjustments for anything else. Okay, so just so you know. And, and we went, we went a four plus one as a potential budget scenario. So we're gonna go into next year with a four, a possible plus one for budgeting purposes. Last year, we went into this year with a three percent. I don't know, but a budget and we ended up with five. Yeah, just to give you a little background. So fifty four, discussion and/or action on CPI market adjustments for budgeted wages. Motion approved by Ermling. Second, second by Zagami on the discussion.
Yeah. I don't care the performance, but the CPI, I think you gotta, the way, I think you have to wait. We already beat that thing up really hard the last three years in a row. I think you can pump the brakes on that one for a year. It increases promotions, that sort of stuff, absolutely.
It's not gonna be a CPI, I don't believe.
Whatever you wanna call it, market adjustment.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that, any more in discussion? Are you no more? All those who prefer sky?
Aye.
Aye.
Six, yes, and one name, okay? Fifty five, discussion and/or action on two thousand twenty four budget timeline. Jessica had a timeline out. She has three dates in September. It's probably in here, three days in October. And right now, she's gonna put a little hole. Move up, the visas had. We're gonna actually send him something and write, and then I'll try to help out a little bit, or something. I'll help those do it all. So.
If you have any dates that you, or you don't like the ones proposed, we're gonna, just let me know if you want to add additional dates or times. We can get that included in the doodle hole.
You just have to pick one of these six, is that correct?
No, those are all.
Probably do three, oh.
So I have three scheduled per month. Normally, we only do two if we can't get everyone together for three times. So we, or if we decide, you know, we have the two in one month, we don't need it, but it's nice to just cut so many cases.
We can cancel, and we have the best.
Yes.
These are joint meetings between board and finance, yeah, okay. So. If Wednesdays are, all right, so what's your pleasure on special interaction on two thousand twenty four budget timeline? Motion to approve early. Second by Zagami. All time, more in discussion?
Yes, the biggest thing that I want to point out is we are looking at adopting the Monday of Thanksgiving week. Um, that has been approved in the past. If we wanna change, um, the schedule can be adjusted, but that's where it's at. We have to publish our budget on the fifth, so that means I actually have to send it to the paper on Wednesday the first. So the final numbers, we don't always like changing the numbers at the end. They are changeable. But when I put it in the paper, I don't always like to change it if I don't have to, so we can hope they're final by the first of November.
Any more in discussion? Are you none? All those who prefer sky?
Aye.
All right, opposed. So, Carrie, oh my God, all the closed sessions are done. You believe it? So we're that much farther ahead. We, we know, but session, attorney referrals, attorney referrals, rock, your place marker. And staff referral, standing staff referrals. Most staff referrals.
Just that. Set up that meeting with.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, remarks from trustees.
Welcome aboard, Terran Administrator. You're still here, current administrator?
Yeah.
Forty one days.
Yeah.
Not counting.
Let's have what it is. Is it really forty one?
I don't know, but I made that number up. It sounds good.
It's not asking, not your phone, like, speed, you should start it. That's gotta be pretty much on the money.
Boy, you.
It's thirty four.
Yeah, not, not that you're counting.
Corin?
I got nothing.
And.
Yes. When the contractor draw a permit. Can we tell them they work on the street, they gotta slip the street, to leave the dirt behind to get wash up?
They do that anyway.
No, they don't.
We do tell them. They, they're supposed to follow. Roman, I know, follows up with that.
With the contractor on Ross Avenue, he didn't do it.
The, which contractor on Ross Avenue?
Right there, those, it's causing those duplexes.
Okay, so Daniel.
Yeah, he didn't do it.
But, but I mean, you know, e- even, even a blacktop drive, you know, they, they, they don't clean that street. You know, I mean, even your blacktop, I mean, that was horrible. You even said so. You said, oh my God, can you do this? But I'm going through a lot of them, and they're just, I'm going, and you're right, where does it go?
I think it should be written on that permit. You should do it, because they didn't even in our district. Fix the sewer system over there, and this guy left, I couldn't believe it.
Yes. Well, you have to leave it the way you, you saw me. That's basically it. So a little bit of gravel in the curb side or something, but not, not the rest.
Is that Daniel that's doing those?
They were done almost.
Well, if we're gonna send an email, just a little bit attacked, you know, please.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I ask.
That's true.
I think you should be part of permit.
Yeah, and I think maybe just move forward with the having it. That's probably.
Yeah.
We don't need to go and chase down all the.
I, I agree.
Nothing. So my remark is, did you make the right decision?
Of course.
Yeah, okay, all right, you know, three, three, four hours, I do that all the time, I just say, you know, a week later, did you make the right decision? Oh, my God. I, I, I know you, so it's a great decision. So that's my remarks. Future items, next meeting day, Monday, September eighteen, twenty three, and looking for a. By Ermling. Second by what? Anybody on the discussion? If we wanna talk anything, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those, so period. I am stunned that we're done.